Good evening, I call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, July 18th, 2016. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It is 7:43. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call a roll.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sapatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn, absent. Eleven present, three absent.
Very good, eleven present, three absent. We have a quorum. Before we get started, I have a statement I'd like to read. In response to the horrific acts of violence across the nation that have occurred against the men and women in blue who courageously protect and serve the citizens of the United States, I along with the elected officials, city manager, city employees, and the citizens of Elmhurst would like to convey support and appreciation for our police officers. We thank our police officers for their commitment to maintain everyone's safety and for their tireless effort to reduce crime and increase police and community relations. As law enforcement everywhere continue to cope with senseless acts of violence against their fellow officers, I urge everyone to continue to show their support and respect for police officers who selflessly risk their lives on a daily basis to protect us from harm. Thank you. Clerk Spencer, Agenda Item 3, Written Receipt of Communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand to be identified. Anyone with written communications. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in our audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I'll give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. We ask you to keep them to three minutes out of respect for the work that we have to do here this evening, but also out of respect for other folks who may want to speak. When you are called, I ask that you go over to this microphone here on my right and identify yourself for the record we are recording. Address is optional. At this time, Clerk Spencer, has anybody signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, I'll start with Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
My name is Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. I'm going to drift back, had a slight accident. City manager brought up the fact that a flyer had been sent out to the public and there were very few responses. Can't quite understand why the people of Elmhurst won't respond to the flyer and indicate how they like or dislike the city. Well, as you can see, very few people even take the time to see this council in action. They call the city, report problems. Nothing really takes place. The city says, "We would like to hear your opinion on anything that's going on in town." Do you really? I've got Han, I've got a parking garage, in fact, I've got two of them. And I've got an alderman whose streets have to be fixed. He can wait till 2021. I've got streets in my own area. You need an armored car to go down it. And I hear the council constantly saying, "We want to hear what the public says." I've gone to council meetings where the rep says, "Come out and talk to me." You're lucky to get three or four people to come out to talk to you. So this whole idea of you're interested in the public, in their opinion, doesn't hold water. In the last meeting, I had an alderman say, "It's a shame that we have to pay for public land because of flooding," let alone this very council and councils before giving away millions of dollars of property for a dollar in some cases, for no money at all. So that's just one citizen's opinion. I don't know how often you people go even take a walk through your ward. They voted you in. Once read an article that said, "People assume when they elect somebody that's a resident of their area that they're going to represent them." Do you really represent the people that voted you in? On the agenda, there's something about keeping track of executive sessions. It's also an article in the paper. State law now says those recordings have to be kept for any future alderman or any future member of the board. I doubt seriously if any alderman here would have even brought up the subject.
Mr. Pagash, could you wrap up your comments, please?
So if you really are working for the people of this town, stop just having 13 to one votes.
Kathleen Sullivan, 133 Pine.
Kathleen Sullivan, Chicago-area alums, is how I was introducing myself all weekend at a conference with, at a national convention of women. I was asked on Friday afternoon to speak during a presentation on women's empowerment, where they said, "Tell me about a time where you were told no and you continued to pursue it." As you can imagine, I think you all are very aware of the story. I started coming here in March of 2009 with my neighbors to discuss the flooding in my neighborhood. Before it even happened to my house, the sixth anniversary of my flooding is this coming week, July 24th. 2010, I had just attended a similar biannual conference of that organization where the theme of it was kind of, "What's your passion?" Little did I know advocating against, for stormwater management, advocating for stormwater management would be my new passion. So I was very pleased to see on Friday that the agenda covered the intergovernmental agreement for Golden Meadows, which was not something I anticipated learning this week while I was gone. So it was very exciting to see that and I look forward to its passage. Thank you.
That is all who've signed in tonight, Mayor.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who have signed in. Is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to speak but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand so I can get a count. I see one gentleman eager. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Regginali after. Sir, please identify yourself.
Sorry about that, sir. I didn't realize there'd be anyone else interested. Good evening, council. My name is William O'Donoghue. I'm with the law firm at Daly &amp; Georges in Chicago. I represent Thornton's Gas Stations, which just opened, I believe it was yesterday, and there was a grand opening, and I know some of you were there. I'm here to urge you to expedite the consideration of their liquor license. I was hoping that tonight the matter would have been resolved.
Excuse me.
And the ordinance changed so Thornton's could get its liquor license to start selling beer and wine. I understand an issue has arisen regarding statutory interpretation of your existing ordinances as to whether or not the license that is going to be issued to Thornton's would allow them to sell single cans of beer. And I can assure you that Thornton's has no intention of doing that, that their business model is not to sell single cans of beer, as they don't think that's appropriate for their type of store. So again, just asking you to expedite the matter. We've, I started working on this about four months ago, reaching out to the mayor and the city manager to try and get the license issued, to figure out exactly which type of license they could receive. We submitted a draft proposal of an ordinance that would have created a specific license that would have only applied to them. I understand the plan now is to give them one of the, a license on an existing category, which we're happy to receive, but they're open and operating. They have empty coolers and empty cases now that are supposed to contain the beer and wine. So again, I know I'm repeating myself, but I have to go back to my client and tell them that I stringent, strongly urged you to expedite this to allow for the issue of the liquor license as soon as possible. Thank you.
This summer is our 11th year here in Elmhurst. Other than our flooding issues, it's been a great place to be, to bring our kids, put our kids through the Elmhurst schools. 11 years this summer, about eight or nine years, I lose count, here in this chamber, asking for something to be done about the flooding. Six years since our catastrophic flood. In the six years, I think we flooded, I'm not sure how many times, but I can't, I've lost count, six, seven, I'm not sure. I'm glad that this is on the agenda tonight to approve the intergovernmental agreement. I hope the Park District is similarly inclined to approve it quickly so that it moves forward, and I hope shovels are in the ground just as soon as possible. You know, we still watch the weather, all, every other day I look at the weather for what's coming. We've been very lucky so far this season that, I call it the straddle, it seems like the storms, the bad ones are either north or south or both, but not through the heart of Elmhurst. So it doesn't disrupt vacations and life and work and everything else. So I really, I'm ready for this to be done so we can get on with life normally and not be paranoid about thunderstorms, and so my kids can not worry about it. My son can't sleep anytime it rains. And so I urge you to vote yes. I know most of you will. And, you know, I know the cost is high and not time to talk about why it's high. Maybe that'll come some other day, but I hope, I hope to get these shovels in the ground soon, and maybe somebody can give a quick update as to, you know, when, when we will actually expect to let a contract. That would be nice to know. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. That concludes public forum for this evening. Agenda Item 5, any announcements from the dais? Alderman Deuter, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. The Elmhurst Police Department is hosting a neighborhood roll call in the first ward this Thursday, July 21st, at 6 o'clock, and it's going to be at the intersection of Fairview and Utley.
Okay, any other announcements from the dais? Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. This coming Friday, the 22nd, is the Fourth Annual Elmhurst Cycling Classic. Racing starts at 11:20. I'd like to thank everybody who's been involved in it. It's truly a team effort, the Park District, the city, the Explore Elmhurst, the college, our board. We're excited about it. I went out to the race this year in Glen Ellen on Saturday. It was their first race in the same series. It's exciting to look back and see it, what we used to be in another race starting in the area. I talked to a lot of racers, they're excited about a race. We've got a huge field. Come out, it's going to be fun, it's going to be a little warm, but we're looking forward to a great evening.
Fantastic. Any other announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda, consent agenda. Agenda Item 6, at this time, is there anybody, any alderman on the dais that wishes to pull an item for further discussion or to vote no? Alderman Palmsky.
6.4, please.
6.4. Okay. Any other aldermen? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.4. Motion to approve consent agenda minus 6.4. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Toledo. Any discussion? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Consent agenda passes minus item 6.4. Onto Agenda Item 6.4. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary ordinance to amend Chapter 36 of the municipal code to remove 36.09R as stated herein. Signed by Chris Healy, Chairman, Danny Palmsky, Vice Chairman, unsigned, Norm Leader.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, I'll ask Vice Chairman Palmsky. You're the one who pulled it?
I did. Can I get, should I give an explanation before?
Just what your intention is.
My intention is to ask to send this back to committee, please.
As acting chairman of the committee right now, that's all you need to say.
Okay.
That report will be pulled back to committee. I know there's some legal questions Alderman Palmsky had, and she wants those satisfied before a report comes back. All right, that's in Agenda Item 6.4. Onto reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. 7.1, Mayor Morley, that's me, couple of things to report on. First, it's summertime, we're all out having a great time, and I got to tell you, I get to tell you guys about one thing, an event I got to participate in that was one of the funnest events I've ever done. The Elmhurst Historical Museum, is that right?
History.
Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry. Elmhurst History Museum, that's new, believe it or not, folks. The Elmhurst History Museum is running an exhibit right now that's called, "But Wait, There's More." And that's actually somewhat locally grown. That's, it's an exhibit about escene on TV products, primarily with a focus on Popeil, Popeil Brothers, and Ron Popeil's company called Ronco. So if you were my age, before the age of the internet, you got to see these great infomercials and commercials about the Pocket Fisherman and the Mr. Microphone and Chapo Matic and Vegematic and all that good stuff. Well, the Popeil family actually grew up in New Jersey, but when they were young, Samuel Popeil, the gentleman who started Popeil Brothers with his brother, actually moved to Chicago so he could hawk his products at, on Maxwell Street. And you're asking, "Well, Mayor, how do you know all this stuff?" Well, that is because the historical museum this weekend held an event, history museum this weekend held an event where they combined the TV show Chopped, where they have local chefs prepare a meal along with this exhibit. So in this case, the chefs actually prepared a meal in front of us in 30 minutes, but they had to use Ronco products. They had to use the Chapo Matic, the Whipple Matic, the Vegematic. It was fantastic. We had, but that's, but that's not all.
But wait, there's more.
But wait, there's more. There was three chefs, and I apologize, I don't remember the names, but I know the establishments they were with. There was a gentleman from Cafe Amano. It wasn't Marco, but it was one of his chefs. There was somebody from OMG, the breakfast and lunch place on the corner, and then the folks who own Pints, Jim and Christie Blessing are opening up that farm-to-table restaurant. I don't know the name of it.
151.
151. It's the old Coco Maro. Their executive chef was there. And so they brought their ingredients, they, we got to watch them do all this stuff. And the guy who won was actually from Restaurant 150. He made a beet doughnut with whipped cream, maple syrup, candied beets, and beets in the doughnut, and then a orange zest. I was one of the judges, by the way, so in case you're wondering. But that's not all. The best part was I got to be a judge with Ron Popeil's sister. Pamela Popeil was here, and she walked us through all the products, and somebody asked her the question during the event, "What was it like growing up in your house?" And she said, "Oh, my God, the one thing I wanted to do in life was just slice a tomato with a knife." And I never could in my kitchen with my father, because he always had something I had to try. So anyway, it was a fantastic event. It was well-attended. My hat's off, I think a big part of the brainchild was Lance Towser, the curator, and Brian Berghager, and it was just a fantastic event. It showcased, there was a whole day of stuff, but I just thought I'd share that. The other thing is, we have the Town and Gown Commission is meeting again this week on Thursday, and I believe Troy Van Aken, am I pronouncing that right, Kevin?
Troy Van Aken.
Troy Van Aken will be there. It's a public meeting. It's a meeting about with four members from the town and four members from the college getting together, seeing how we can collaborate, and the new president of Elmhurst College will be there this Thursday, 4 o'clock here in City Hall. Finally, it was mentioned during public comment, Thornton's grand opening was this Friday, just this past Friday, I'm sorry. And if you haven't been there, I would encourage you to go. The Thornton's folks are just terrific community partners. They have an absolutely beautiful store, a beautiful setup there. They're committed to their product. If you were there for this speech, you'd see what their commitments are as a corporation. I would encourage you to go on the website, not only to learn about that, but go visit their store. They opened up the, they opened up the ceremony in the store with a donation to, was it ECAF? A donation to ECAF. That location, it's the old Stephen Steakhouse location, is a location that has been empty for over 10 years. So not only did they, they told me the number, but I'm not going to, but, but they asked that I keep it somewhat confidential, but they literally spent millions and millions and millions, you can keep adding, of dollars improving that site. So not only do we have a brand-new site and a brand-new building paying increased property taxes, but even in the short time I was there, they were doing booming business, so that's more sales tax. The more revenue they can generate, the more that, that burden can be shared and ultimately reduced to the residents of Elmhurst. So we really appreciate Thornton's investment in town and are looking forward to their continued success. That's it for me. City Manager Grabowski.
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Nothing to report. Any other reports from the dais? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request two updates from the city manager, please, at this time, one of which I brought up in the past, well, both of which I brought up in the past, the ComEd Right-of-Way. We had some offline discussions, I haven't heard back, in regards to what is ComEd's commitment of keeping the Right-of-Way mode appropriately, just like every single one of our residents do. The second request, it was announced, I believe it was over the weekend, about O'Hare Airport having a massive terminal expansion. In that article, it mentioned on how O'Hare Airport traffic or flights will increase significantly. I don't remember if they had a multiplier, but it will increase significantly. So I would like to find out what we as City of Elmhurst is doing to keep in touch with what that, what that increase will be and how that will impact Elmhurst and how we as a city could minimize any potential impact.
I'll give the information. I'll look into that information and come back with a report.
Okay. For both? For both?
For both, yeah. I, I've not spoken with ComEd recently, so I'm not sure where they stand. So I'll have to come back on those.
Thank you. Okay. Any other reports or recommendations from elected officials, appointed elected officials? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolution. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, and the Elmhurst Park District for the construction, operation, and maintenance of stormwater improvements at Golden Meadows Park, Elmhurst, DuPage County, Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long time coming to get to this point, obviously, but I'm glad we're here. There's been a lot of work by not only Public Works Buildings Committee, but by the, all the members of the dais here, and then obviously the Park District. And so the most recent development is that together we went back to Illinois DNR. They have given us approval to move forward based on their requirements and those of the National Park Service, and so we're at the end of a long road here, and I would suggest that we as elected officials move forward and approve this resolution so that the two bodies can ultimately move forward with this project in an expedited manner. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Deuter, and then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mayor. We're making notable progress on stormwater management, and it's an issue we can't address alone. I'd like to acknowledge the swift and complete cooperation we've received along the way from DuPage County, both elected officials and staff, for the Quarry and Tree Streets project, the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Webster and York 290 projects, and in this case, from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, whose approval is needed for the Park District to sell the land to the city. I think the decisive cooperation from the county and state agencies reflects an understanding that open land and public dollars are limited resources, and the public is best served when we work together. There are a number of folks from the city and the Park District who have put in significant amounts of time to get the Golden Meadows project to where it is. I very much appreciate their efforts.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fully support moving forward with this resolution. It has taken, as Alderman Deuter just mentioned, many of different entities to be able to get to the point we are today. I believe all of us on the dais, as well as city staff, would like to be at this point many and many a month, if not years ago, but we are where we are today. So I want to thank everybody as well to moving, make sure this moves forward and we can get to this point. The one other thing that I wanted to mention was, I did have earlier questions about the exhibits that weren't attached to this resolution. I have full confidence that our city attorney's office, as well as our city staff, will make sure those exhibits reflect the discussions, as well as what is currently in the report that we've had in the committee meetings previously.
Okay. Any other comments as it relates to this? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the residents of Elmhurst who have said that stormwater is an important priority to them, as well as the residents of the fourth ward that I represent, where this project is going to go into place, and most importantly, those who live on the streets that are going to be targeted for improvement, Pine, Avon, Willow in some respects, as well as the folks down on East Court and Caroline, I just wanted to say thank you for everyone that's put in the work for this. It's been a long time coming, as we've all said and acknowledged, and it's very exciting to see us at this stage, and I fully support this, and I'm looking forward to getting a shovel on the ground. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Resolution is approved. I know that there's some questions asked, and I say this every meeting, I'm going to comment on this just because it's been such a big issue before we move on to other business. I do too want to thank everyone involved getting us to this point. It's been a, literally a very long road, but I'm reading that because it says road closure on the storm, stormwater management website. But that was what I was going to highlight. Pardon me. As it relates to stormwater, I think it's important that everybody in Elmhurst understand that it affects everybody in town, not just the folks who have an issue with specific stormwater flooding in their houses. I equate it to, people say we have great schools in town, but the percentage of people who have kids in those schools is actually less than 50%. Or, hey, we've got great parks, but a lot of people don't use the parks. But I think Elmhurst is greater than the sum of its parts, and I think it's very important, and this council has proved that it's a priority, that showing not only the residents of Elmhurst, but anybody who's considering moving into Elmhurst, that stormwater management is a priority. And I think we're proving that as we continue to stack up these projects. This is just another one. I think it's fantastic not only for the folks that it affects, but for all of Elmhurst, that we have an entire website and more than a half a dozen projects underway as we speak that we can point to if anybody says, "What are you doing?" So I congratulate all involved. I'm looking forward to a shovel on the ground. I know that there will be an update that's on the stormwater management website, which is elmhurststormwaterplan.org. As to the timing of this, I think I speak for everybody involved that as soon as possible is the intent, and we'll get back to you. is the intent, and we'll get back to you. I also want to thank the residents. Specifically, I guess I can't go, can't discuss the Golden Meadows project without specifically singling out Kathleen Sullivan, who has been tireless in her pursuit. You've always been fair, you've been, and you've been tenacious, and I'm looking forward, we're looking forward to providing you some relief. So thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thanks, everybody, for the support on this. That having said, on to Agenda Item 9, any other business right now? Alderman York?
Thank you. The Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee will not be meeting next week. We do, will not have a quorum.
Okay. Any other business? Alderman Levin?
The DPC Committee will not be meeting next week either.
Okay. Check the website for updates on that, everybody, but two of the committees will not be meeting next week. Any other, any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Bram. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.